Do you have those priorities?
I had offered that I would make a list. There didn't seem to be any uptake for that list.
Okay.
So I have a preliminary list in my head.
All right. Oh, well, all right.
But if time allows.
If time allows, we'll get to that.
Yeah.
All right.
And then I have another addition, if time allows, and that would be, under old business, a status update with regards to the SHPO interface on local designations that is referenced in the minutes that Michael Coop would be reviewing those.
Okay. Thank you, Lois, Ryan, RC. So let us get right down to business. Folks, are you ready to begin your presentation?
We are. I will start by sharing just a document, just our index page to talk a little bit about what we're going to cover today. In the broader master plan document, as you know, there's a fair amount of time given to thinking about reuse strategies with the sense that without a viable reuse, the master plan could not be fully informed. So now that that's in place, and I believe you're all fairly well up to date on that, what we want to talk about today are, call it the more traditional master plan factors. And these are the items noted in bold. Can you all see my screen here?
Yes, sir.
Good. You know, in sort of standard form of these sorts of documents, obviously, there's a history and such, and I won't trouble the experts with that. But we want to jump into some of our breakdown of land use, existing proposed, et cetera, and then see if you have any input on that. I will say, in some respects, this is it's a more static master plan than often is seen in these sorts of properties, simply because, in some respects, the horse is out of the barn and down the street because the property has been divided by other users and is at least partially in either a reused state or in a continuing state. For instance, the county's ownership of the western parcel. So there will not necessarily be tons of changes over time to some of these. But we'll walk through sort of how we see it and what opportunities we see from a master plan perspective, setting aside the Kirkbride building for the moment. So Beth, do you want to jump in and screen share those, or do you want me to share those?
I've got them pulled up. Do you want me, do you want to talk? Do you want to talk? And I will share my screen.
Why don't we do that? I will stop sharing.
Okay.
And then, so first thing is existing land use. These will be things that I think you all are familiar with. The back and forth we have is both, this is the document that will go to a broader audience than just local, and also, we're trying to reflect some of the recent, in relative terms, changes here. MNHS wants the master plan to reflect the historic parcel, not just the city ownership. That's led to some interesting rabbit holes in that the city is going to be expected to adopt this master plan, but some of these parcels, in some extent of it, are outside the city limits. And so there's a jurisdictional resolution there, and we've resolved that by, we'll be couching our language in prefers or recommends, but not requires, sorts of words for those parcels outside of the city limits. Most prominently, that's the cemetery. Obviously, that's a key historic element here, and we don't want to leave it unmentioned. But it gets, like I say, it's a jurisdictional question. There's also been a little bit of back and forth. We've been trying to nail down some of the modern parcel lines, most specifically for the nurses' cottage that's being transformed into senior living there. We're not able to find consistent reference to what those property lines are, so that will continue to change. What you see reflected on this sheet, at least is our present understanding, best guess, and we will continue to update that as we are able to pin that down. As I said, none of this is news to you all, but looking at the broader audience, what land is institutional, whether occupied or not, what land is parkland, what land is residential? Those are the principal uses. The northern sector of the site does still retain at least a fallow agricultural use in character, and that, long term, very long term, is probably the only sector of the site that's likely to see significant changes. Next one, Beth? Features and ownership. I should say what I'm looking at. Again, pretty straightforward for you all. The sort of outstanding feature that's first visible, besides the building, is the parkland, the Morella Nichols Park, and then the existing and ongoing use to either side of the Kirkbride Building, the Veterans Home, and the county office buildings. The surrounding parcels are all pretty nicely mixed between single-family, multifamily, commercial, and industrial uses. Very straightforward, again, just looking at that broader audience, trying to explain what is around this parcel. Next one up is the historically significant properties. Again, you all know these by heart. The one that is somewhat still a question is the original Farmstead Building. We know that the barn is there. Clara, at one time, you mentioned that, you know, I should say, the pole barn is still there, the modern barn. The remaining farm building there, is that in-city ownership as well?
I think it's in the VA.
Yeah, that would be the state, the VA.
VA.
The VA has that.
Okay, the VA has that, okay.
Right.
All right, we will make that change.
And is he, is he speaking of, are you speaking, Bill, of the carriage sheds that are in blue, or are you speaking of what was part of the main Farmstead?
The carriage shed in blue.
Right where my cursor is here on the slide.
Oh, that's, oh, okay. That's not the carriage shed, but that would be DA property.
Yep.
So the carriage shed I'm referencing is up by the nurses' cottage.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. That, our understanding is that went with the nurses' cottage, is that correct?
That would be my understanding also.
Right.
May I ask, have you talked to Schlossman's? Because it shouldn't be hard to get those boundary lines. They're the ones that own them.
We have had conversation with them. They're, I don't want to say that they're hesitant, but they've been understandably reluctant to share property information with unknown purpose. And I think as we come back around, I expect we'll be able to nail that down. We're working with county GIS as well.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yep. Let's see, Beth, why don't we jump to the next one? As we start, no, no, I'm sorry, I was looking for view sheds.
Oh, and I don't have the view shed slide.
Oh.
Sorry about that. Would you like to keep this one up so we can discuss it in terms here?
Sure. One of the significant factors on the site are those view sheds, particularly the approach from town, looking up the hill through the park at the Kirkbride. You know, fortunately, that land is already parked and will remain parkland for the foreseeable far future. So keeping those views open will become more of a landscape discussion and plant discussion, I think, than anything related to buildings. Maintenance of a historic landscape is always an ongoing debate. How manicured do you make it? How do you adapt to plantings, trees included, reaching life expectancy, lifespans? And so there's a renewal process that goes on. I think there's also a subtext of plants tend to spread over time, et cetera, and in what degree of active maintenance the site is most appropriate for is always a subtext that has to go on. We'll mention that a little bit, but that's primarily a maintenance thing rather than a master plan thing. In terms of other view sheds, there is, not only on the adjacent, sort of, call it the front side of the Kirkbride, but we do feel that the backside of the Kirkbride, now that it is cleared out, is also, at least, let's call it a secondary view shed. It was not historically open, but it is really, to me, it's the best way to get an understanding of the extent and sort of the majesty of that building, because it surrounds you when you're back there. From the front, looking through the park, the building slides away from you around the curve, and so you never, as big as it seems, you never really understand how big it is. And so we're looking at, in that back, establishing a criteria that looks to preserve as much of a sweeping view there as possible. The other parcels, the county building is relatively innocuous, assuming that there's no expansion there, which will be a separate criteria, I guess, but a lot of the view considerations will revolve around parking and screening parking appropriately, typically with plantings or landscape changes and things like them. The Veterans Home is an active, ongoing, daily outdoor use of the site, indoor use there. There, again, the main concern will be the potential far-future expansion of the site, if any. We want to address that in a way that respects the views of the Kirkbride and the historic cottages in the foreground or the southeast of the Kirkbride. Jump to the gateways site, Beth, or sheet.
Shoot. Hold on just a second. I, let me pull that up. I'm sorry, Bill. I thought I had them all pulled up. Give me just a second, and I will get that up for you.
While we're doing that, one thing we can talk about, I mentioned the cemetery being outside the city limits and such. The path, let's call it, that connects to the cemetery from the roadways behind the RTC is pretty rough from a visitor's standpoint or any kind of public apparent trail there. So some of the things that we will talk about, and again, this is where we're trying to be very careful in the language, because it's outside of city limits, but there needs to be an appropriate, safe, observable, obvious path to get there, whether it's a visitor or just someone visiting who's been there before. On a rainy day, you don't want to feel you're going to get stuck in a farm field. So that's going to go on. What Beth has up now is what we're calling our gateways slide. This is a discussion about entrances to the site. Even though there's a fair amount of traffic comes up the back through Incinerator Drive, we still really see most of the traffic, both, this is literally us seeing this in our observations, and the traffic counts we've checked. Most of the traffic's coming in through the two streets adjacent to the park. We expect that to continue, and we want those to be maintained in a manner that's appropriate. The western, or center, let's call it, gateway nearest the county buildings is fairly straightforward. Our concerns there are pedestrian and traffic safety as much as anything. The character of the roadways down by the eastern, southeastern entrance, what more or less appears as the main entrance as you approach from town, because of the way the roads have been reworked there, it's not an apparent gateway anymore, and we would like to see some work done to correct that. These are, again, you know, these are elements in a historic landscape, so they, I want to be cautious about suggesting that massive change there. But the roadway, as you come up from town, it's a very nice passage through residential area, and then you start hitting that, you know, the sweeping curve there, and it becomes not freeway character, but let's call it suburban character as it heads west then to the industrial area. And so we want to make sure that there's a strong presence maintained there. Beth, if you would jump to existing circulation, and Bill, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this one?
I will. Bill, I did your order, and your slide's in order. I'm assuming this is the existing circulation. Is this your first slide?
Yes. Thank you, Beth. So in preparing the master plan, one of the first things we wanted to do is to get an idea of what's going on from a transportation perspective in the existing condition. And there is a number of things happening on the campus. Let me start, and I'll move through this rather quickly. Beth, could you show that one-way segment, please, with your cursor?
Oh, right here.
Yeah. On the campus, there is generally two-way traffic flow on the roads, except for that one area that Beth just highlighted. That is the only one-way segment. That particular roadway link is about 15 feet wide. The other roadway links are between 25 and 30 feet wide. We can't, we couldn't find any rationale for that, for that one-way configuration. There is sidewalk along many of the roads, but it's incomplete sidewalk, and the sidewalk width varies between three and five feet. And so I think that's important to know, to note. With the reuse of the campus, we would anticipate that pedestrian activity would be higher than it is now, and so accommodating pedestrian movement would be an important thing to do. Up here, let's focus on that pathway to the cemetery, Beth. Would you outline that with your cursor? Thank you. As Bill mentioned earlier, there is a pathway, don't quite know what to call it, on this slide, I called it an unimproved agricultural field trail. You wouldn't want to be out there on a muddy day. And in doing a little research on the cemetery, we found that people continued to go to the cemetery, not only as visitors, but as, some folks are visiting buried relatives there. And so that is an area that we wanted to point out. I'm sure you're familiar with it. It passes through trees, gets out into a field, passes by a beehive. It's, seems like it's gravel in some areas, and some places, it's just a trail. Come, Beth, Beth, if you would, to right, you see where it says Union Avenue? Go north from there a little bit to those orange sidewalks there. In that area, there is, there are three and a half foot to four foot wide sidewalks, but they're not complete. They don't go all the way down to the intersection of Union and FER. And so for that reason, you know, like, why are they there? And why aren't they complete? So that's another thing that we identified. So there are those, those are the kinds of things we found. Let's go to the next slide, please. So started thinking, just at the conceptual level, about the improvements that could be made. Let's go to the Trail to the Cemetery. So sort of suggesting that that trail might be improved, not as a full-fledged road, you know, 25, 30 feet wide, but instead as a groomed path, perhaps, for cyclists, pedestrians, and then thinking about seniors who might want to get out there to the cemetery, perhaps a road that could accommodate golf cart-type vehicles. Now, that is outside the city, and it's on private, well, it's adjacent, it's surrounded by private property. So some type of agreement, just suggesting that maybe formalizing an agreement with the owners of the field, perhaps, to allow, to provide some kind of easement, is something that, at the conceptual level, we talked about.
Could we discuss that just a bit more?
You know, I could, you're not coming through very clearly.
Could we discuss that just a bit more? There is a second cemetery there. It is the Potter's Cemetery, and they're right, that's where it is, where the cursor is.
Yep.
And that's accessible by a better quality road than the one that we're accurately describing and discussing right now. Is the Potter's Cemetery in the county's hands? And to what extent is that actually a township, unimproved road that runs along the northeast boundary of this DNR land that's north of the tract in question? Is there a different approach that could get more parties involved to put the bill to get to this cemetery?
I'm going to ask Bill to respond to that, but I do, my understanding, and Bill, correct me if I'm off base here, that cemetery, I think it's called the Poor Farm Cemetery, is outside the 120-acre Art Kirkbride.
Yes, yes, it is.
And so we, you know, and of course, we're looking for some guidance from you, recognizing that it's there, but treating it in a certain way, I don't know. Bill, you want to respond to that? Let me ask one question. Is that, are you talking about access from county, that would be sort of westbound access from County Road 27?
Yes.
To get to the?
Yes, I am. And that's actually wider access and more drivable access than the path directly to this cemetery. And I'm wondering if that's in county hands, to what extent, I don't know if it is, but if that Parker Cemetery is in county hands, what obligation does the county have to enable that to be accessed? And how might that positively fit into this discussion is the only point I'm raising?
Sure. I think, first, I should say, as Bill said, it's outside of the historic RTC site, so we are not fully informed on that. It does appear to be a township easement through there, and I think it's unofficially or unimproved, I guess. I think it's an excellent opportunity. It's hard for me to say whether they'd be interested or not, but it seems like a natural connection and a natural path. Having said that, we will still want to note the historic path from the RTC up. MNHS will want to know about those things, even if the path is no longer in use, we want to have it noted as this was the, essentially, the procession back and forth.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Let me move on to, Beth, will you show the one-way segment on this map, please? Want to suggest that that roadway, that roadway segment, that's one-way in the existing condition, should be widened to accommodate two-way traffic and particularly fire and emergency vehicle access. So that is a change that we would anticipate having in the future. Other improvements, suggested improvements at this point and conceptualized include pedestrian and bicycle paths. And for example, right where your cursor is, go, yeah, right in there, to continue the sidewalk that is incomplete on the east side of Union Avenue, and then to provide on the west side of Union Avenue, a bicycle path. Likewise, over on Oak Street, which is, yep, to have a sidewalk on the east side of Oak Street and a bicycle path on the west side. And then go over to the industrial road, yes, Incinerator Road, to have a pedestrian path, and then across the way from it, to a bicycle path. And then that one piece there, yes, that would be, we have room to provide what I think is a very nice two-way pedestrian, what's called a shared pedestrian bicycle path. So that's kind of... Oh, Bill, I think you're frozen. That... There you are. This is accessible to the community at large. Can you, can you hear me?
We lost you for a second, Bill, right after you finished the discussion about this path and were saying how, what this path would be, look like.
Right. And I have an illustration of what that path would look like. I'll show you in a moment, but that would be different. That would be where others have a bicycle path on one side of the street and pedestrian path on the other. This one would be a shared... This one would be a shared bicycle and pedestrian path. Before we leave this slide, a concern is going to be, and Bill touched on it a while ago with the discussion on potential gateway locations. We think it's really important that this campus is accessible to people in the community and obviously to visitors. And so linkages beyond the campus itself, not very far, of course, need to be considered as they go into the surrounding neighborhood. You know, across First Avenue, pardon me, Fur Avenue, for example. So that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at as we move forward. Let me go slide to the next slide there, next picture. This is the, just a section that shows what the two-way pedestrian bicycle, the shared facility would look like. This would be along Incinerator Road from the cottage to First Avenue where the, where you have access to the industrial park. And there's, interestingly, there's just enough room to squeeze this in. And it just fits like a glove. It's, it's a very, the dimensions work out perfectly. And part of the, part of the idea, of course, in the reuse study, we found that residential reuse is the best use, most viable use for the RTC. And this would provide access for people to, residents to the industrial park so they wouldn't have to drive to the, to work. They could walk or they could bike to work. And then on the next slide, there are those locations where we're suggesting, because we don't have enough room and we don't want to have a negative impact on trees on the campus. You know, we just don't have enough room to do the two-way, the shared bicycle and pedestrian path. And those locations, what we're suggesting is a sidewalk on one side and a bike path on the other side of the street. And I showed you on the couple of slides back were those locations, I mean. So that's kind of where we are now with conceptual circulation improvements on the campus. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
No, I'm just going to go on, but questions is a good, good opportunity if anyone has any questions at this point. What I was going to jump into was just the, part of the thinking behind the routes that Bill's outlined and the concept of using Incinerator Road, which by the way, I'd love to give a better, better name to. Yes, back to, if you think about view sheds, how we talked about view sheds, it's normal that we think of the view shed as the view of the Kirk ride, in this case in particular. But it's also the view from the Kirk ride that's going to be important. And a big factor in any reuse here is parking, no surprise. Residential parking, no matter what the uses would have been or will be, that's always a factor. As you know, historically, a lot of the staff and service parking was in the back, the inside of the U to the north of the complex. And we believe that will continue. And that necessitates connections back there, even for simple pedestrian and bicycle connections. That's going to be where the bike storage, the bike racks are. We're not going to be adding lots of new doors to the front of the complex. So the ability to have that occupant, resident or tenant use and connection and circulation is going to be important. It does need to be sheltered within that, that area to preserve that, that view shed out front and that feeling of campus. Having said that, Beth, maybe if you wanted to jump to the first of the detailed plans. This is an example layout showing just surface parking just to serve a residential reuse, keeping the existing front visitor lot as guest parking. That starts to be an awful lot of paving up against the building. It separates anyone in the building from the potential of shared amenities outside of the parking. And is a fairly intrusive way to achieve this. It makes it difficult to carry your groceries in, all these things. So the things that we're trying to accomplish in the back of the U, the north side, are shared amenities, service, meaning garbage, recycling, you know, the new transformers, all that, all the fun stuff that goes with the building. Parking, but parking in a convenient way so that a resident is not disadvantaged by having to carry groceries a quarter mile or things like that. But all, to do all this in a way that preserves that idea of the sweep and the majesty of the, of the building and enhances the enclosure. This area, as you know, with, with the removal of the shops and the industrial sort of service buildings in the back, the landscape is not what it historically was. So it gives us a little bit more free hand to make something appropriate for the, for the modern use of it. So that's what we're, we're looking at. This particular sheet we looked at, what does it take to just put parking in? And we looked at several layouts, both individual lots per building, which is what you're seeing here, and also a continuous lot. The continuous lot geometrically was a little more graceful, but it was an awful lot of asphalt. And not knowing that the buildings, from building to building, might have different formats, apartment, condo, those sorts of things. We felt, you know, we should keep separate, separate lots. We moved away from this particular option again because of the impact of that. Beth, if you want to look at the next one. What we're more inclined to is a, a system that looks at the nature of the Kirk ride building being the lower level, half, half recessed, call it into the earth, half the level down, what's sometimes called the garden level. And the main level, the first level being elevated then from, from ground level. That gives us an opportunity to do very simple parking decks that line with that reinforce the plane of the Kirk ride water table, the base course, and provide much less impact to the site and more a shelter and structure to amenities that we provide out there and just frankly, more space for amenities as well. So one of the land use models that we'll show will be this, this parking, parking strategy. In terms of shared amenities, we will list potential shared amenities. But that is, that's a design question rather than a, than a master planning question. But that could be everything from simple green space to ball fields. If there's a high percentage of children, maybe a playground. It could be structured athletic experience. We do think there needs to be an interpretive aspect here and that might, might take the form of ghost outlines for some of the removed buildings. It might be more of a path and landscape oriented. I do want to note that the drives we show are non-public. They are drive, driveway in character, they're not a street per se. And so that when you leave the main circulated street, if you come in on Incinerator Road, for instance, on your bike way, when you, when you step into the property, when you roll into the property, character will change and it becomes much more of a low-key, private, traffic calm sort of, sort of area. Again, the guest parking, even for residential use, there needs to be some guest parking. So we would keep the existing lot in the foreground right now. Again, assuming a guest approaches from the front, from downtown up Union Street, those sorts of things. Variables in here, depending on the final use for the tower building, that guest lot may need supplementing. We've kept a bus drop so a tour bus can come through, those sorts of things. But we do feel long-term that Port Crochere and the original true front of the tower building needs to be, if not replicated, at least replaced in an appropriate manner so that there's appropriate access into the building instead of just the temporary access in place right now. So there will be ongoing evolution to this. But this is sort of the, the state of the master planning decisions right now. Want to see if you have questions or comments. I do want to respect your time and notice we're, we're running low here. But does this make sense? And does this agree with your thoughts in terms of the direction for the site?
I have a couple of questions. Did you say you were taking in consideration the groundwater situation there as related to those parking structures?
Well, the groundwater, if you mean the leaking that's going into the building?
Yeah, that, there just happens to be a whole area there that runs through my neighborhood even. I'm immediately east of there. And a lot of it originates up on the campus and it's fairly high water table.
Right. Well, let me back up a little bit. From our condition review of the building, part of the damage that's going on is roads. But specific to the high water table that you're mentioning, one of the things this gives us the opportunity to do is as we excavate to install these behind, we're essentially building a diversion mode that would allow us to intercept any water coming from that direction, from the uphill side and redirect that into the appropriate storm system. So that, there's a, it's not a very glamorous thing, but it's a big opportunity and that we think important for future reuse of the buildings is to make sure that those lower levels stay dry.
Can you please shed light on where on this picture the excavating that you're, that you just referenced would be taking place?
It would be only in the footprints of the, the parking that we show?
If you're creating that lower garden level of parking.
Correct. It would, the lower level of parking would line up with the floor level of the lower level of the building?
Yeah, okay. To that end, if I were going to live in that property, I would want my northerly view, northwesterly view, northerly view to be longer than the 30 feet or so that it appears it just might be before hitting that parking. And if one is excavating, as I think makes sense, could you just take that U of parking lots and in essence, move them on top of the lower portion of that ring road and create five tunnels that go from the buildings at that garden level ground, floor level, out to those parking lots? So that the space of green between the backside of the building and the commencement of the upper deck of the parking is wider?
Yes, if I'm understanding you correctly, that, that would be the case. The things that we want to manage, well, let me, let me back up a little bit. The first occupied level, the main level of the building would be slightly higher than the, the upper level of any parking in any case. So there wouldn't be anything blocking a view necessarily. There would be things in the foreground. And as, as we can push that lower, that will allow the view to open up, as you suggest. That is, that's very important. The actual resolution of this is sort of the next stage of design, pushing things up and down. I will draw just, just very crudely, I think you'll be able to see this. The existing.
Hold it, Bill, I think I have to stop. Oh, there you go, you are there.
Yeah, the existing building has four levels. And as you know, the lower level is in the ground, something like that. What we are showing is something like this where a tunnel or walkway would come across at the lowest level and potentially at, at this level too. But a person standing on the main level would be able to see clearer across. That's very crude and we will have those more, more clear in the final. But that, that's the concept that we're presenting. What you described, if I understand it, is not dissimilar and would be very attainable and depending on where you arrange the ring road and those sorts of things.
Correct. You could make the underground tunnels longer and just create more green space.
Yep. And there is a history of tunnel, tunnels on site. And we know that, that the buildings have great potential to connect in with existing openings that are presently blocked. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity there, you're right.
I appreciated your comment about the, what was the old entrance right in front of the tower. I was here, I was living here in the 50s. The bus stopped right in front there and that was the entrance. It had an archway and of course, it's some of the old photos that were shown in our last meeting. And I take it you'd like to see that entrance re-installed, if I've got that correct?
We would. We think it makes sense for the, at least envisioned reuses of the building. Because the historic one is cleanly gone, there would be an opportunity to, while making this sympathetic, resolve some of the accessibility questions, ADA, things like that in a modern, modern entryway. But do it in a way that complements the historic fabric.
I can speak with authority because I was on a bus that stopped right in front of there and they had the archway. And with my mother, and that was back when they had bus service here. It stopped right in front there and they had the archway. That was way back in the 1950s. So I totally agree with you.
Perfect, yeah, thank you for that, that's good to know.
Was that?
Other, other questions. There will be a few references you'll see to things like fire lanes and fire access, the practicalities of modern, modern planning. So there might be more of a walkway developed along the east side that just happens to be wide enough to support a fire truck. But those are sort of next stage things in many respects for. respects for, for the next design stage.
Bill, I do appreciate the use of especially bike and pedestrian paths. I think that's very important up on a facility like that. And also the, even though the cemetery is out of bounds, I guess, from the historic district, some kind of, that's very popular. People are more and more going back there, and I just don't like people driving back there. I mean, I wish they would prohibit vehicles to go back. It's just, you know, kind of ripping it up. And a walking path, bicycle path, connecting the hospital to the cemetery, I think, would be very interesting.
Sure. The only need for vehicles there would be for emergency use, for, for maintenance. The question becomes elderly visitors.
Yeah.
And, and if there's a access to a golf cart sort of situation, that clears that up.
Yep.
Am I correct that these documents are, or that, you opened with the index of a, of a draft master plan? Is that accurate?
Correct. That, these are a part of the master plan that you have not seen yet.
Yes. Bill, I would posit that this body is part of the master planning process, that Chris is our representative, our agent on it. And under representative and agent structures, everything that comes to the agent representative comes to the principal, which is this body. And to that end, I would respectfully request that this body, the members of this body, would have a copy of that draft report.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you very much.
What we'll do, Clara, if it's okay, we'll distribute through you.
Yep, that's fine.
Digital is fine.
Other questions. I know we're, we're using your time up here, and I want to be respectful of them.
If you're done, I think we appreciate it, the update. Thank you very much.
All right.
Folks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
See?
Just in code. This is, in a sense, everybody's talking about the building, what do you do with the building? But like Ed Strand said at the last meeting, the grounds, I mean, it's a real gem. And I didn't, we didn't have time. I was gonna bring it up to him, but he probably knows this, but in front of the, a lot of people use the picnic shelter. And then if you know in the distance, there's, there's some, it looks like a row of trees, if you get out there, that's the old outfield to the softball. And the soft lot, people say, hey, Lee Kruger was up there. They, they still played softball there. Someone would like to see him. There would be another use. Especially with the, the parking lot that most, that people refer to, people could park there. They could play softball games there. But the grounds are, to me, are, are something not talked about as much as, maybe rightfully so, as the buildings, but the grounds have got a lot of potential. And they brought it up with the bike paths.